All right, so I am gonna, Mark, I, oh my god.
Wow, that's a little loud.
Mark, I'm gonna start the meeting, all right. So, good evening, it is November 27th and it is six o'clock or six oh four. And it is the Groton Board of Education Regular Meeting. And our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance. And Clint, would you be willing to lead us? Thank you.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, and the second order of business, I guess I'm pushing that off to you.
Okay. It's my great pleasure to recognize the participation and years of experience that our outgoing board members have had. I did a little bit of math and I was calculating that about six meetings per week times twelve months, seventy-two meetings, then add in all the other events, the extra budget meetings, the extra concerts and games and school visits and all those things that you do all year long. And, you know, I was thinking, okay, so we could round it up to eighty, but it could be a hundred. But imagine that, and so the first recognition goes to Rita who served twenty years. So if we do the math, twenty times eighty, she has done her year.
Thank you.
She's served.
Oh, well, thank you for all you've done here.
Wow.
And for Liz, five years, but it feels like, since I've been here since 2014, you've been right by our side as an educator and a board member all those years. And William isn't here, but I will be sure to give him his, he came at the right time, came at budget season, you remember, and he gave us that sense of reality as he was doing budgets for all the hospitals and telling us kind of the gloomy news there. We were feeling a little bit better about our school budget. And then there's Kim, ten years and she's been my partner and helped me navigate, especially as a new superintendent along with Dr. G., who was my mentor all those years, and Phil, my wingman. And I just can't appreciate you enough. Thank you. Twelve years, twelve years, that's right. Twelve, twelve years. I wanna miss the year times eighty or a hundred. Yeah, wow, that's a lot of math. So.
And you're the math guru.
And I'm, I was doing the math in my head.
There's a reason I was a social studies teacher for years.
So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I didn't know if Rita or Liz, if you had anything that you wanted to say, or?
Do you wanna say?
I'll say thank you. I'm gonna miss everyone. The staff, the teachers, the students, and all the wonderful experiences I have had serving on the board. Thank you.
And I'll try not to cry because you know me. But, you know, I just want to say it's been an honor and a privilege to not only be a part of the teaching ranks, but also to be able to bring that here and free to be, to feel very validated and to let our teachers know that they're being heard. And even although I'm not going to be on the board, I just think it's really important that they recognize, and our students too. We've got great student representation. Thank you so much for, to all our past and our present students, that it's really good that you listen. And that's what's really important to this incoming board, is that they listen because, you know, this is what we're here for. And I wanna say it's been an honor. You're welcome.
My career in the Board of Ed started with Rita Volkman. She got stuck canvassing door to door with me my first year.
I'm sorry.
No, it was wonderful. And the amount of knowledge, Rita, that you had as you could address people's concerns and the voice that you share on the board and the, and the work that you have done at LEARN and watch that transform and then also be part of the transformation at, here is just amazing. And Liz and I were at one point neighbors, once again feel sorry for her. And it's been, it's just been really a lot of fun to be with you and to hear your voice and to hear your reason. And it's been really fun. I was fine until Dr. Grenier showed up. And then I took a deep breath and I was okay. And then my really good friend Beth showed up. And as she whispered in my ear, we've done really good work. And I absolutely wanted to say thank you that the work that we did together was really built on friendship and trust and understanding where the two of us come from are always at a good place. And I just, for that, I really am, I say thank you. And I just, I can't, absolutely.
I would like to thank also Dr. Mitchell. He was my mentor. He helped guide me, he had faith in me. He put me on the negotiation team the very first year. And I said, you know, Dr. Grenier, I'm a teacher. You sure you want me negotiating for the teacher's contract? And he said, yes, I know you'll be fair. And the other person that I really had a lot of respect for was, and learned a lot from, was Beverly Washington, who thankfully is serving again on the board. Beth Janikopoulos and Archie Swindell. Archie gave me his seat on LEARN and I'm hoping to pass on what I've learned at LEARN and to be a member to Andrea, who I think, you know, has asked. And I'm really hoping that she gets to the benefit of the experience of LEARN and then sharing it with the board. Thank you.
So, I just wanted to make sure that I could see Andrea and also Bev, who I know her camera is not on, but if she raises her hand, I just wanna make sure that I can see her. Oh, Bev, good to see you. And I'm glad that you are here because you were also one of the, that helped me out as a newbie board member, so I appreciate that. Also, just to know that I have been through many superintendents, that my first year and a half, I had several superintendents. And with John Ramos was our long-term interim, who was a mentor for me in terms of this is what a board does and this is how a board functions. And then Mike, Dr. Grenier, your leadership and friendship has been greatly appreciated. And Susan, my partner in crime. I have really enjoyed my time working with you and alongside of you to doing betterment. I don't, I don't wanna take a lot of time, but I do wanna just to say that twelve years, though it's not twenty, is just amazing. And this board has held me through many life experiences. Since I've been on the board, I've lost both of my parents. And, and the holding that the board members did for both of those losses is something that I hold greatly in my heart. This board also watched me have three of my, all three of my children not only graduate from college, but also graduate from, from higher ed. One with a doctorate in neuroscience, one with a master's in occupational therapy, and one with a master's, I think it's in coding, but I never can figure that one out. And then also watched and held me as two of my three got married in the past couple of years. And so it has been my constant, the Board of Education has been my constant. And it has been oftentimes in my own life's rocky waters, it has been what has kept me afloat. And so for that, I think I've, I am very grateful for that. I've also been very proud of watching this district grow and change and expand. To, when I first came on, there was one, there was two social workers for the whole district. And we now have a social worker at least in every single one of our school buildings. And that was an important, actually, campaign promise for me. And so I feel very honored for that. And just to watch the three buildings and, and watching the grants and how they get, how they get maneuvered and how they get blossomed. And to have people know, both on the state and federal level, about the Groton School District in, in Little Connecticut, the state of Connecticut, is pretty amazing. And I've been honored to watch it and to be part of that journey. And so I just wanted to say it's been a great ride. And I thank everyone for your patience with me, your understanding of me and allowing me to be who I am as I try to figure out this leadership role. So, that's really what I wanted to say. So at this point, I'm going to move us to the comments from Citizens section. And is there anyone online or anyone here? Beth. And if you could please, excuse me, let me just do my little introduction. I'm sorry, this is the comments from Citizens Agenda items. This is the portion of the agenda where the board welcomes comments from citizens. Each presentation should be limited to five minutes or less and citizens should, if possible, submit written comments. Presentation should be related to matters pertinent to Groton Public Schools. Board members will only ask questions in order to clarify the speaker's presentation and cannot respond during the comments from citizens portion of the board meeting. Citizens should make their presentation from the podium and state their names and addresses for the record. I'm glad that you follow directions.
Good evening, my name is Beth Borl, I'm president of Groton Education Association. I am here tonight to say thank you to our departing board members. Many of us have been together for many, many years. And I thank the board members that are continuing on. I was thinking all day today about what I would say, other than thank you, because those are two of the smallest words that carry the most meaning. And as I told you, Kim, and I say to all of us, we have done good work. I'm on my eighth superintendent. And we've, we've done some great things. Rita, you and I started negotiating together way back when, under Dr. Mitchell, who saw a kindergarten teacher when he interviewed, even though he interviewed for second grade. But I love kindergarten, thank you, Dr. Mitchell. You probably have one of the most thankless jobs. And it's a job that you volunteered for and were elected for. And people don't often realize, it's not paid. You spend all of these evenings guiding Groton Public Schools, being its fiduciary oversight and our policies. And you trust your teachers and your staff to take those ideas and move them forward. And we thank you for that trust. And we thank you for the time and the dedication that you gave to Groton Public Schools and that we will continue to carry that mantle forward. It's not goodbye, it's we'll see you later. And I hope you do great things in the future. You don't, you might be like Bev, you might come back. Get a little more, come on back.
Yeah, never know.
But I hope you know that you did good work. And your legacy will live on in Groton Public Schools, and we thank you for that.
Thank you, Beth. All right, any other comments from citizens?
I have one comment.
Please.
Beth, I remember how hard we fought to have full day K.
Oh, yes.
So when I started, it was half day K and it was a long push to get that established. So that, besides having eleven elementary schools, we're down to five now and three middle schools down to one. So there's been a lot of changes, but the full day K was so important. And the treehouse also, before and after school care.
It's nice to do in a land where things, when we, when we kind of focus on a lot of the negative, but to think about all the things that have come forward. Bev, can I recognize you? Yes, I can.
Thank you.
I know that you're Bev.
I'd just like to echo everything that Beth said and thank every one of you for your service to the Groton Public Schools. You did, you did an amazing job moving our school district forward and we are truly gonna miss you guys. So thank you very much.
Bev, thank you.
Thanks, Beth.
Appreciate that. All right. Student representative report, the two of you, follow that.
So I don't have much of a report for, like, on the student end 'cause I, it was a busy month and I kinda lost track of some stuff. But, I mean, I've been in this school district for twelve years and I've only been doing like this as a student rep for the board for the last couple of years. But, you know, I've had a pretty good experience. I've had a pretty good experience in the last twelve years I've been in this district. So I, you know, and I've seen a lot of the stuff that you guys do in these meetings and I've heard about a lot of the stuff that you guys do in these meetings from my dad. And, you know, I just, I think it's good work that you're doing. Yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
So you have nothing to report, nothing that's happened? You ate, you can take, you can take that.
Good evening. Very busy month.
So if you could introduce yourself, because anyone that's online may not have met you because you were at the committee the whole last time.
Absolutely. My name is David Hogato and I am a rising senior here at Fitch High School. Oh, right, yeah, yeah, I guess, I guess so, yeah, we'll call it that. I am a senior here at Fitch High School and I'm, I'm very new to this, so it's, like, I feel all these emotions all at once. Oh my gosh, these, all these people are leaving me as I'm just joining and it's very sad.
Oh no, you're gonna be in good hands. You've got some really good, you have two good people that are online. And you have Matthew and you have Dean and Jay, who is not here at the present moment. And you're gonna have some new board members. You're gonna be in great hands, it's gonna be a great board.
I'm very, I'm looking forward to the amazing work that we're gonna be doing with our incoming board. And I'd like to thank you for years of dedicated service to this amazing town and this amazing school that I get to be a part of. And I'm, I'm very thankful to grow up in this district with such strong leaders. From the student representative board's side, the major things that I'd like to report on this month is, the first very big thing, not only just because I'm a senior and going through it in this moment, but I wanna say that it is probably one of the most vital and successful elements of Fitch High School at this moment, is the work of Ms. Alanak. And the seniors that I've talked to and the juniors that I've talked to and even some sophomores that I've talked to have given me numerous compliments on her work and her organization skills of pulling countries and colleges, excuse me, colleges from all over the country together to give us an idea and a better perspective of what college life would look like there. And she has been influential and instrumental in the part of this transition that gets so messy and COVID scrambled it up and threw it right back in her face and said, okay, here's this new mess, figure this out. She has done amazing work and the feedback that I'm hearing on the, how easy it's become to figure out how to apply to schools, how to find these scholarships, how to find, how to go through FAFSA. FAFSA's happening, the FAFSA meeting is happening next, this Wednesday at four thirty at Fitch, which is, Dean's looking over here, he's like, I gotta do this for the third time for Zoe. I have, I'm gonna be doing it for the first time. And the, the students, the census of the students has been, over the past month, just such high remarks for a lot of our student athletes that are going down the NCAA eligibility route, signing their, not their lives away, but signing themselves away to colleges to commit for athletic futures and other amazing, amazing opportunities that we've had, such as the CT auto-admission program that Zoe and I think are both a part of for the top thirty percent of Fitch High School to get automatically accepted into, I believe it's eight schools in Connecticut, all state schools minus UConn and a few other, including St. Joe's, the University of New Haven and the University of Hartford. So just from that, I've had overwhelming feedback of just, like, this has become so much easier to grip through this process. The next thing is our school spirit, which has been off the charts for a very, very cold October. We had a Spirit Week leading up to Thanksgiving that was an amazing time. A lot of wacky photos came out of it. A lot of our Instagram accounts that we have for our football team, for our other sports teams and our clubs has really grown through these Spirit Weeks, not only through donation drives, canned drives, which was a massive success through our key club. There's been an overwhelming amount of support behind the student body being able to create what it wants school life to look like in terms of, you know, Wacky Fridays and the events that we were able to held within reason. We have an amazing football team this year that's gonna be playing tomorrow night in a state game for the first time since I've been here. And I think it's the first time in a while that they've been in a state game, so we're all very, very happy. The end of sports season did come to a close for a lot of our other students. And after talking with a lot of different coaches and a lot of different players, we can all successfully say that it has been a very smooth and amazing season. There was no buses getting stranded anywhere like there has been in years past or freezing cold games and not knowing how you're gonna get home. Everything has been well kept together under Mark Romano. And on, in terms of safety, I know myself, I got concussed during one of our soccer games in a way. And the support that I received from not only Mr. Romano and the communication between the incident that happened at East Line with, that led to the concussion and the confidence that a lot of us felt knowing that we have a very good support group behind us as athletes and that are able to stand up for us when we think that something isn't right. We had a few key instances this year, and I won't go into details, of disrespect towards certain players on our, on our team. Not mine specifically, but it was something that had been very relevant for the past couple of years. And we felt that we had a very, very strong backing by our school that didn't even question if this was something that needed to be brought to light. They immediately brought it to light. Mr. Romano immediately got involved and the athletes were very, very happy with how this entire thing has gone. From the rest of the student body, my only other point would be, in a wacky time of everything in the world going on, we don't exactly have a easy world to live in at the moment with everything going on in the news and social media. The breaking down of things and not being scared to ask questions to teachers, such as our AP Gov teachers being like, what the heck is going on in DC? And with certain court cases being overturned and certain court cases coming out last June, a lot of student representatives, a lot of student body members, when they came back to school were like, so how is this gonna impact me specifically? And received overwhelming comfort and support and security from our teachers explaining step by step how these new changes in our government would affect people and specifically gender, you know, and sex, I guess, oriented decisions and the backing that they felt. I mean, I've had, I remember talking to multiple students and saying that they felt nothing but fear over the summer with the decisions. And coming back to Fitch High School, they were met with nothing but overwhelming support from not only our school psychologists, from our school counselors, from our school staff backing them and saying, we support you in your decision and that this isn't, how this should be, but this is how it is at the moment and this is what we can look forward in the future and how we can potentially change it with this next generation.
Thank you, David. That is really helpful to know that you've got a safe place.
Absolutely.
To call home away from home at your Fitch High School. It's really important.
Yeah, it has been, so that's, that's mainly it. But it's just, it was over, it was amazing to hear how fear, which is something that can plague a high schooler's mind for all four years and something that will never, ever really leave the back of your mind until you leave and might not even leave then. But to know that you have a safe and secure community where your voices are heard, your opinions are heard. When I knew that I'd be here tonight to represent our student body, I wanted to make sure that if there were any real issues to address, we would address them. But from the random selectees that I selected to ask from each grade about what they thought, it felt just unbelievably overwhelmingly warm, I'll say.
Thank you. Thank you, thank you very much, I appreciate that. All right, we are going to move into superintendent and administrative reports, Susan.
All right, so we actually, November seventeenth and eighteenth was the Connecticut Association of Boards of Ed and Connecticut Association of School Superintendents Annual Conference. And we actually had about six of us attend with Dr., with Dr. Piazza and I. And Catherine Reagan and Dave also joined for the Student Day, which was terrific. And we were leading the Y was the focus of this opportunity. And there were wonderful topics that ranged from artificial intelligence, social emotional learning, legislative updates, and do we have some of those? Mostly unfunded, social media, student discipline, roles and responsibility of boards of ed and the superintendent. And we were very Falcon Proud to have our Fitch Honors Course entertain everyone at lunch on Friday. As a matter of fact, all the student performances were so uplifting and terrific. They really are the highlights, I believe. I know Dr. Piazza wanted to speak a little bit about the AI and Clint was able to join us for that. We had, you know, a really terrific speaker. So if you wanted to share a couple takeaways from that.
What was most impressive is I guess their keynote backed out at the last minute. So this person who was speaking was a replacement for, for the keynote. And he just did an outstanding job on a topic that, of course, is of interest to many people as AI grows in popularity and controversy. The gentleman's name is Dr. Justin Reich, R-E-I-C-H, Reich maybe? And his presentation, I can definitely forward it to all of you.
Yeah.
His slides are not very descriptive, so I don't know, but they could definitely lead you to, you know, kinda down a rabbit hole of some really insightful research on it. His focus was about, you know, basically why should we care about it? You know, as educators and as board members. And he talked, you know, four points around, you know, we really need to prepare young people for the new realities that involve AI. It can also be used in a positive way to empower educators in terms of how they educate students. And he basically used, said, you know, we really need to use it as a, as a learning opportunity for how to navigate both as educators and as students, this new reality. And his fourth point was more on the humor side, but, I mean, he said, and plus the kids are cheating like crazy, so we need to, you know, kinda figure this out and try to help students learn how to use it in a positive way. And he did really give us a great example of how it can be used incorrectly and how, and how really AI works and how it builds upon the previous word. And the longer, you know, the, the longer the essay goes, the more fictional it really becomes and how we really need to start understanding it better. And there's a lot of resources within his presentation. So I'll, I'll forward you all, it's all available on the CAPE Cabs Convention website, but I'll forward it to you just so it's easier. But a very interesting presentation. The other one, one of the other ones I just wanted to mention was, I sat in on East Line Public Schools' presentation on their Career Pathways Program. And I have since sat, you know, not sat down, but I was able to forward some, some of the information to Chelsea Courtwright, our Career Pathways Coordinator and Guidance Department Chair. And hopefully I could connect, you know, I know the superintendent there and the assistant superintendent, and I was able to, to meet with their assistant principal, who is the Career Pathways Coordinator there. And they've done a lot of great things there, so hopefully we can connect and see how we can, how we can, you know, continue to build up our career pathways as well. So a couple of noteworthy presentations that I sat in on. Plus, the president-elect of CAPE gave a very inspiring speech as to how he wanted to move the work forward to ed forward. So it gave me a lot of, a lot of hope for, for the work to come in the future, so.
Cool, right.
I can't remember his name or the district he's from.
Bloomfield, he's from Bloomfield. And he was, I think, a board, board chair for years and years and then, you know, is doing now the work at CAPE. So it was very inspirational, yeah. Did you wanna say anything, Matthew? You joined us for all that time too. And was there any one takeaway?
I attended, I attended one seminar, that was a seminal seminar, if you will. It was on AI, but it looked at it through a different lens. It looked at it at the lens of the impact of AI. And when I was a kid going to Cornell, AI was artificial insemination. So I'm still adapting to the terminology. Well, I went to an ag school, what can you say? But AI or artificial intelligence has effects on students within the schools and outside of the schools. He gave some very disturbing data on it, and particularly one that grabbed me was the, the high number of female students who had been verbally or socially assaulted over AI and that fewer than a quarter of them told their parents because they were afraid that if they told their parents, they would have their cell phones taken away from them. It's very practical reason for not telling, but it, it says that the problems that we face are visible and less visible. are visible and less visible, but we nonetheless have to deal with them all to provide an environment for our students. If they can't speak to their parents, perhaps they can speak to some of our professionals and we can be of support.
Well, I guess it's like any research project, we expect the kids to do the research, find evidence, back it up, make sure it's real, and then use their own words to tell the story. So no matter where we get the, the information, that's still expected of our students, right?
Thank you for the privilege.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matthew. All right, if there's no other, speaking about the CAPE Conference, let's move on to the Alliance status and funding.
And I had put this in board notes, but it was one of the questions that was kind of gnawing at me because I learned that we were still in Alliance District last year at the end of the year, but we wouldn't be receiving any additional funds, and we would not have to do the Alliance Tracker, which I was kind of pleased with, and that we wouldn't be getting the same level of support that we had. So I did ask and got the answer through the Chief Academic Office at the State Department of Education, and we are definitely one of the 36 Alliance Districts, and we are one of the top performers. They did ask us to graduate a couple of years ago, but thankfully for our legislation and a little, you know, back talk, we know that our ECS funding at the tune of $25 million is preserved with being an Alliance District and then years thereafter. So we are, it was confirmed that we are still considered an Alliance District and, but I do think that we need the, the new board to, we need to be really in touch with our legislators because they're the ones up in Hartford doing all that good work and keeping their eye on the prize. So I want to make sure that we are paying attention in the future. So that's it. Short and sweet.
Any questions about the Alliance staffs? All right, hearing none, the Director of Finance, are you also playing the role of David today?
I am. I am.
We won't say whether you're cute or not. We're just going to go with that.
You don't have to say that.
Okay.
I'm a Grammy. I guess if, Mark, if you can put up the slide for Attachment 1 that Joyce sent you. And just looking at this object code, this is the, I want to commend Dave Fly for really encumbering everything and putting a lid on this spending because that helps us get through the year and know what we have. And I know we've kept the principles at 50%, and, you know, we'll gradually release when we're able to, but we just want to be certain that this budget that we had predicted over a year ago, while there are costs that have gone up, and I know that David has shared and we've shared in board notes, the graph that really shows all of the things, the trends of spending between the heat and electricity, the facility repairs, things that were not known to us over a year ago that have happened, that have happened at additional cost for us. But if you look at this, if you go down to the bottom of this, if you can scroll down for me and look at the, the final answer, we can see that all of the contractual obligations have been fully encumbered. This month, we encumbered bus contract, the LEARN OTPT contract, as well as tuition obligations. You knew that we had also encumbered, encumbered staffing costs as well. This month, our large expenditures included health insurance at $907,000, utilities at $171,000, salaries and payroll at $865,000, and professional services at $145,000. But if you look at the bottom, because of the encumbrances, and I checked last year's, and we're really in sync with what, how we were, our trends last year at this time. But you see that if you look at the encumbrances, we've encumbered $43 million so that we know that that is like secured. And it looks like the remaining balance is $14 million, but that's the remaining expendable balance that we have. And we looked at the expenditures are at the tune of $23 million so far this year. So just wanted to make sure I captured everything. Our significant remaining expenditures for the year include the health insurance claims, non-certified and hourly salaries, special education tuition, and pension costs, as well as any workman's compensation claims. So he's really taken a handle on this and has captured it in a short time that he's been here with us. I don't know, did you want to say anything about that, Jay? I know that we had a finance and facilities meeting, and he's really trying to keep a tight lid on things.
Right, well, first of all, I mentioned he's only been with us, what was it, two months? And so he, he really has had to get his arms around everything that, with regard to closing last year, as well as projecting for the coming year. And I was interested to hear that he's got some new ideas about how to present.
A budget.
The budget.
Yeah.
And so looking forward to see how he does that.
So we'll be going through that, I think, in December and looking at those new ideas and sharing it with the sitting board. So that will be our work before the holidays, I'm certain. So the next one would be the Attachment 2 to put up. This is on our health insurance dashboard. This is another item that he's created with graphs and charts so we can kind of keep track of our health insurance. So the first graph talks about the enrollment in the plan, the monthly claim cost. He's expecting October will be coming soon, coming within the next week or so. And then the claims by size and then the annual health insurance cost. So the one thing that he had shared with me is that usage consumption across all three utilities is at or below the same period in the prior year. Oh, wait, I think, sorry, wrong.
We want the health one.
Yeah, the health one. Enrollment is down 3% from the same period last year. Average enrollment is down 7.3% over the fiscal year. Claim costs, September 2023, monthly claims cost $800,000 are up 12% from September 22, and fiscal year-to-date claims costs are about 30%. I know we had those steep rises in the summer months, July and August, but it seems like we're trending back to kind of where we were. Claim costs, day-to-day claims are under $50,000, and they've decreased 15%, yet those mid-tier claims of $50,000 to $200,000 have increased 25%. So we're really monitoring those mid-level ones. Claim costs, claims per employee per month have increased 17%, and the average claim costs for FY '23, 2023, average claim costs were up 6% from the prior year and are increasing 8.3% per year over the last four years. So those claims are going up. I mean, like everything, everything we're faced with, whether it's utility bills or, you know, grocery bills, even healthcare is all going up.
Shocker.
So that's kind of the trend. So the next dashboard is related to our energy and utilities. And he basically is saying consumption across all three utilities is at or below the same period from last year. The next 90 days with weather is going to tell us something, between snow days and cold days, and I think we've gotten more rain than we've ever gotten in the past year. So especially the, you know, even the past few days. So with the health insurance, with the, I'm sorry, energy insurance, for FY '24, price per gallon is a dollar less than the prior year, so that's good news. Oil's still too early to gauge, but we're going to be monitoring it. However, the budget is 40% lower than last year's cost. We'll have to watch that as we budget for the following year to make sure we're as accurate as we can be. Natural gas consumption and costs running in parallel with the prior year, and electricity consumption's down by 2.5%, and costs are $20,000 less. So that's good news about the electricity so far.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Liz.
Yes, Susan, can you just, I'm noticing here on, it says, year-to-date electricity usage by location. Why, we haven't turned over Pleasant Valley School yet?
Pleasant Valley is still used by the robotics team, so.
It is?
Yep.
I thought they were at Mary Morrison.
Nope, it never got moved to Mary Morrison. There was issues with the fire chief not allowing it to happen. So we still are using it for this season. My hope, my goal would be able to use the garage at Fitch High School and get them back to the high school and use that for manufacturing, but that's something that I'm working with Sam on because then that might need a, a space to put some of their equipment. But I'd rather clean it out and get the space for the equipment and use that good space for the kids, so that's the goal.
Because didn't we have to move everything out of the back building at Pleasant Valley?
We.
Did that ever?
The frame has been reduced from materials, but it's, there's still items in there. There were a lot of things that were moved in back of central office when we were able to have the extra portables from around the district. So a lot of it has been centralized right at the, you know, Board of Ed building, but we're, it's a work in progress, I'd have to say.
Oh, wow.
Certainly, the SB Butler and the Claude Chester, which were sent back to the town, those were all cleaned up, but yeah, there's still a lot of supplies that need going through.
And it's also interesting, looking at this, how much oil is used at Katherine Kolnasky? Much more so. Northeast Academy, you know, it's not as large as Katherine Kolnasky, but still, I mean, they're using so much more.
So you do remember that both Northeast and Katherine Kolnasky, the real, the real issue is that we need those HVAC systems eventually. They're on a CIP list, but you're having to heat and air condition in the summertime. You noticed that oil, everybody kept saying oil went up in the summer because in order to take care of that building and not have any issues with the, you know, temperatures, you have to really dehumidify it, and that's their dehumidification system. So good notice, Rita. It's not been resolved yet.
Dean, do you have a question?
Oh, I was going to say, I don't recall, even though the schools are the same vintage, in fact, you go to them, you'll say, I thought I was already in this school. One looks like it's the original, the other, I do not remember whether they're approximately the same size.
No.
Is, is one significantly larger than the other?
Yes, well, their, a whole wing at Northeast Academy did not get built because they ran out of money. They had, they, I think it was $20 million, they stopped right there, so the whole wing has, is not there at Northeast, which is such a shame because that school could use that other wing.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
We're supposed to be mirror images, just like Mystic River and things, but they're
not.
Right. I was just curious, what account for the discrepancy?
But they both have the same HVAC systems.
Yeah.
And Northeast has had also an additional remedy because it sits in a very swampy area, so they have done that work outside, and that could play into more success, hopefully.
But same spaces, same windows, same insulation, same?
Yeah, a lot of the same systems are in place, but like Rita said, there's at least four to six classrooms that were never added on.
Six, I think.
Yeah, so.
Any other questions? Yes, Matthew.
Susan, is there, Susan, any long-term plan for the conversion of oil to some other fuel in either of those buildings?
Well, I, that's a great segue because I'm going to the facilities update, and you'll be happy to know that solar panels at Groton Middle School and Mystic River are on schedule to be completed before the new year, and the town will go and do the inspection. So certainly, and also looking at the Charles Barnum Building, as we go to put on a new roof, there is some incentive on putting also solar panels there. So I think the, the more we can look at those kind of technologies to be able to reduce some of these others and, you know, have some cost savings efficiencies as well.
Could we put on a referral list, a discussion of this for the new board?
Sure.
It's not a crisis in any fashion.
No, but we certainly will have to keep, keep that.
So you want to refer, and can you be clear?
I'm not quite sure. We don't, which committee we go to, whether.
No, I, I guess, I guess my question is, what do you want on?
A referral for a discussion of phasing out fuel oil, I guess that's the low relative, maybe that's not the low-hanging fruit, I mean.
Well, I would say that.
So I'm just going to talk about energy. I don't want us to get stuck on that.
Thank you.
But so you're basically looking at energy.
Long-term energy usage alternatives.
That sounds good. And that is definitely a topic that we deal with in finance and facilities on a regular basis.
Great.
Dean?
Does anybody recall the solar panels that are going in? What percentage of the building's energy is that going to actually support?
I don't have an answer for that.
Didn't they say around, my memory's vague. I thought they said somewhere in the neighborhood of 20 or 25%. Does that strike you as reasonably accurate?
It could be. It wasn't, it wasn't the whole building.
It strikes me as reasonable, but not necessarily to the reality.
Right, so how about?
Referral to the finance facilities.
How about if, if Susan can get the information that she just throws in the board notes, but that, you know, I'll, I'll make sure that the agenda item for just understanding energy, long-term usage, and what's available, because my guess is that it, that's an ever-changing field.
Sam gets back tomorrow from his vacation, so I'll ask him on Wednesday.
My goodness. And I guess that that, if there's no further questions about finance, that's a good segue to move in. Are you, are you prepared to speak to?
That's exactly where I went. I went right to facilities and have Sam's notes in front of me about the solar panels, field lights at Groton Middle School, the foundations are in, poles will go up next, and by the end of December, we'll have completion on field lights. These are projects you know we've been talking about for a long time.
Pretty nice.
And then an STA update. I did get a, a couple concerns from parents about late buses, so I looked into it, and last week, we had 10 drivers out. This week, we have six drivers out. They're doing double runs to make it work. Doesn't mean they're doubling up the kids, because I said, how many kids are you putting on the bus? But it means that they're doubling up and they're getting another run in there. And that, we've been making sure, though, that we use that parent square to communicate to the exact bus runs that are affected. As a matter of fact, there was an accident today on Fort Hill.
Yes.
And Joyce sent it out to everyone that just be patient, you know, we didn't know how long the road would be closed, so I think that has helped. And as the weather gets cold, you know, kids are standing out, and if they're waiting a little time, it's better for them to know ahead of time if the bus is running late. And we also know that we have four drivers who continue to commute all the way from Greenwich, Connecticut, and I've met them, and they have been absolutely wonderful, but they, they do travel to, to get up here to, to transport our students. And there are two new drivers who are going to be taking their tests next week. So I know that they continue to look for drivers. It hasn't been easy, just like with some of our staff, you know, it's been very difficult to find staff, but it's always good to hear that we've got some drivers in the wings.
Do we have any questions for the, the finance, or excuse me, the facilities, also known as Susan? All right, I'm going to move us on to the committee reports. Policy, Andrea, are you there?
I am.
Okay, so.
We can't see you.
We can't.
Oh, there she is.
Is there a way, because I don't know if Bev is on, and I don't know if anyone else is on, so the way that it's been up on the screen.
Up there she is.
Yeah, Bev, I, I know that you don't like to be on screen, and that's fine, but it just so happens that when you go off camera, I'm not, I don't see you, so I don't, you're going to need to say, hey, Kim, I've got a question, because I, it goes to a complete screen of the, the room, so actually I get to see myself, which is kind of scary. But so, Bev, I'm not trying to ignore you, and if there's anyone else also, I can't, I can't see you if it's done any differently. So Andrea, policy.
We're going to be bringing you two policies for second reading tonight, and we'll be meeting tomorrow as well.
Okay. All right, thank you. Curriculum?
There was no meeting, but we have everything set, ready to go for the next committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Finance and facilities, I believe you did report out, but are there other things?
Well, we met on November 14th. We basically discussed the same documents that Susan laid out this evening, as well as a discussion of fiscal year 2024 financial challenges, such as the bus, and specifically about sports teams and the cost of that, and the CIAC changing which teams, students will be playing against and how that's going to affect. And, um, the CIAC changing which teams, um, students will be playing against and how that's gonna affect transportation, so. And then we received similar reports to what Susan presented tonight.
And we'll be sharing that with the entire board when the new board members come up on the challenges that we face today that will also affect next year as well.
And the years to come.
And the years to come.
Anything else? Thank you, sir. Any questions for the, the policy curriculum or finance and facilities? If not, Matthew?
Communications did not meet this month. We are losing two of our current members, and we're just waiting for the new chair to appoint committees, and we'll get back up and running.
Awesome, awesome. Right, um, so, going on to the second side of our agenda, so negotiations, we are currently still in mediation, getting hopefully very close. And that will be a vote that the new sitting board will need to take if it, if we're able to seal that deal. But if nothing gets sealed, um, this then does go into.
Arbitration.
Arbitration. I was gonna say something else, but it's arbitration. And I think both parties are pretty committed not to have that happen, but, so, stay tuned, folks. It feels like, and I wanna say thank you to Dave, Lori, and to Susan, and to, um, to Floyd, and also to the para, um, people who actually worked over the holiday weekend to do the negotiations, and I think, I really do say thank you to both sides for that. Rita, Learn?
Yes, we had a, an excellent presentation by the superintendent of the Westbrook Public Schools, which is a very small district, but it, it is so comprehensive. They have pathways, they have robotics, pre-K through twelve, in all their three little schools. They have manufacturing, automated materials, buses come from EB and transport the students to EB. They, and EB pays for the buses, which I thought, you know, that, that would be something we really need to look into. So, there are pathways, they have twenty-two individual pathways for their students, and they're clustered into advanced technology and science, art, business communications, health, human services, and public service career pathways. But this was, I can't tell you, the, the program of study is just amazing, so I'm gonna pass this on. Because the courses and the way it's arranged, she, the superintendent, her name is Christine Martineau. She was just fascinating.
She's wonderful, a little bit, but snapper.
Like a dynamite, yes, and very, very well organized and very well presented.
I have to say that we actually, Chelsea Courtwright has gone to Westbrook and has collaborated, and we've actually adopted the, the same levels of career pathways.
Oh, wow.
So, she's actually used that mo-, as one of the models she's seen. It's really comprehensive, you're right, yep.
And for those of people who don't know, Chelsea Courtwright is the person who manages our career pathways, um, at, at the high school.
Mm-hmm, and then we also had a, a short presentation by, um, Patrice McCarthy, who is now the Cape Executive Director, as well as the, their General Counsel. And she said there's not too much going on right now because it's a short term for the legislature, I think just three months. But all districts by March fifteenth have to have in, um, their district equality plans. So, each district has to have this in, I guess, and they're also gonna be working on teacher evaluation, more support for that. But I don't think very much will happen in the administrate right now. Also, I found it interesting that three districts now have a community coordinator, and they're sharing coursework, which is interesting, Eastlime, Waterford, and Old Saybrook. So, they have one coordinator and they do remote teaching, so they're expanding their educational opportunities for their students, which I thought was wonderful, and it's something, you know, we couldn't possibly do with, you know, Ledger, Stonington, our little, our little corner. I invited, um, the executive director of Learn, she'd like to come to one of the committee of the holes in January, and she'll reach out to you and plan it so the new board can understand what Learn is all about. So, I thought that was, you know, very important. She'll give a great, um, presentation, and they can ask her a lot of questions. So, because Learn does so much. They now have seventy-six students at Ocean Avenue Learning Center. The executive director had the state reps from the area come there and to see the great work that they're doing there for our, um, students that have tremendous needs in the area. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. Um, Groton Scholarship, okay, so the liaisons for both the Town Council RTM, and the Board of Ed, we are not meeting until Mar-, I don't think the meeting is until March. I could be very wrong on that. And then the AGSA, GEA Board of Ed liaison is not, I think it's also in March? Would that, does that sound?
January.
January. So, maybe the liaison for the other one is also in January?
And then probably March again.
Who knows? All right. Thank you. You would think, I would know, I just don't.
In October.
In October, yes. All right, um, and then the Groton Scholarship?
Yeah, they, uh, the scholarship committee met at the high school, um, I wanna say, two weeks ago. I did not attend, uh, but they are looking for the new person to come on board that will represent the board.
Absolutely. Athletic Fields, is there any?
I, I think their work is, is basically done at this point. It's been passed on to the town unless the, the town sends something back to, to look at.
Okay, so that might need to be looked at, okay.
Question, is there an integrated plan that you're aware of?
An integrated plan was developed years ago. It's all been turned over to the town. The town has to decide how certain pieces of property could be utilized to, to actually do that plan. And there have been public hearings about it, listening sessions, there's, there's all kinds of information that's been generated. But the needs list was, was, um, generated years ago. It, it probably will be out of date by the time it's brought up.
Trails, Matthew?
The next quarterly meeting is in December.
Okay, so did you get the email for that? Because they sent me an email. If not, I will just forward that to you.
I did receive one.
You did receive one. Okay, so I don't have to forward it to you. All right, and the library?
Nothing new to report. We had a lovely meeting. The, uh, best news is that the circulation is above COVID for the first time. And, uh, part of it is due to, uh, the work with our students. A lot of books are being delivered to our schools, so that's a good thing.
Did you hear that? All right, um, and the State Council for Educational Opportunities for Military Children?
We're meeting on Thursday, and I'm, I'm hoping to attend.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay, we're gonna move on to the action items, which is the consent agenda, and all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. Points of clarification will be allowed. Can I have a motion for acceptance? Still moved? Can I have a second, please?
I'll second that.
Do we have any discussion?
Just a thank you to Dr. Horgan for the, the drums and the, all that fun stuff, the cymbals, all good percussion stuff.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the consent, um, agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? That motion has carried, and once again, the board would like to say thank you to Dr. William Horgan, who has donated a Ludwig eight-piece drum set with an additional drum cymbal set, including three extra cymbals, to be used by the music department at Fitch High School. We thank you very much. And then the old business, um, Liz, would you be willing to read the motion for number one, please?
To approve policy P five-one-three-one-point-one-one-one, video surveillance as a second reading.
Can I have a second to this, please?
I'll second it.
I have Rita for second discussion?
Very few changes.
Really just clarification of language.
Yep, clarification, thank you.
Any other discussion?
I wanted to, um, to tell you how, um, much this would help, this, the idea of surveillance cameras on the bus especially helps administrators. When I was a principal, I had a, a young kid that I just loved, but he smacked somebody on the bus, and he said, oh, I never did it, I never, never did it, and I said, great, I had his parents there, I said, let's look at the film. And there he was, and I didn't have to do a thing, the parents took care of it.
Thank you, Andrea.
You're right, they are very helpful. Any, any other discussion? Hearing or seeing none. All those in favor to approve policy P five-one-three-one dot-one-one-one, video surveillance as a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Rita, would you be willing to read number two, please?
Discussion and possible action regarding the second reading of policy P one-one-two dot-two, admission requirements for Groton residents.
As a second reading. Um, can I have a second to that, please? Matthew, I have a, Matthew, the seconded? Any discussion on this, please?
Just again, it's just updating of languages.
Andrea, unfortunately, we can't hear you, so if you could.
Talk louder.
Talk louder.
Or get closer to the microphone.
I hope this is better. At any rate, uh, is, again, it's just clarification of language, and it, it has to do with adding new language about, uh, things that, that were not, for instance, we didn't have, um, intra-district.
That's right. We had to update it.
Yeah, that's really all it is.
Any other discussion on this? All right, hearing none. All those in favor of, of the policy P five-one-one-two dot-two, admission requirement for Groton residents as a second reading. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried. Dean, under new business, would you be willing to read the motion for, under new business, please?
I would be willing.
You would be?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are you asking me to? I'm done, Kim.
I love you, really. I'm missing you already.
All right, I move to ratify the Board of Education's action at its November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three special meeting adopting the amended bylaws of the board.
Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you. Um, I believe I sent an email to everyone about this, and so we are not, this, this is not asking to ratify the bylaws. What has happened is this, in my interpretation of the, the older bylaws, I interpreted that we could use a special regular board meeting to pass the policy. And talking, and actually in, in, in discussion with Dean, but also getting clarification as well from our board attorney. He, he recommended, both of, both gentlemen recommended, actually both attorneys recommended that if the, if the board, um, could just ratify, to understand that we intended for the, for these policies to be in effect, but that because I misread what the, what the actual policy meant in terms of how the procedural, how to do the procedural piece, but we're intent for the bylaws, that if we could ratify that, then we're, we're basically, we have put, put any, um, misunderstanding to bed. Is that?
It's what we call belts and suspenders.
Belts and suspenders?
Belts and suspenders.
You only need one, but very often lawyers will recommend that you wear both a belt and suspenders.
Okay, all right, so I guess I'm asking for the new board to have belts and suspenders on. I can't wait to see how you look. Would be my.
I swing both ways.
I just can't, I just can't.
I can dress them up.
All right.
What's our action?
So, our action would just be to go with this motion, and, and if you, and if we approve this motion, that means we now have offered either the belt or we've added the suspenders to the wardrobe. That's really what that means.
Okay.
You're saying yes to your actions.
Right, we're just saying yes to the action. We just wish Kim read the policy better. That's really what, what you're saying.
Yeah, it, the, the rules basically try to set, differentiate between a meeting of the, of the Board of Education and a meeting of a committee of the Board of Education, which is either one of the smaller committees or what we call Committee of the Whole. We're so used to meeting as a body of nine that we don't remember that a committee of the whole meeting is not a meeting of the board. It's a meeting of nine members who happen to be, nine members of the Board of Education. So, the policy says that we'll adopt policies, first reading, second reading, and quote, regular meetings of the board. In other words, not the cows, for example. Well, a special meeting of the board is a meeting of the board. It's noticed ahead of time, it's not an emergency meeting, the items are on the agenda, except for the title, special meeting. It, it walks and talks and functions and is legally like a regular meeting. The distinction is that we did not tell the town a year ahead of time, the way we're supposed to with our regular meetings. These, this is our calendar of regular meetings, right? We don't give the town a calendar of our special meetings. Nevertheless, the regular meetings are, it can be changed. You just have to follow the law with respect to notice ahead of time and, and putting things on an agenda, which is done with a special meeting, so. That's all this is, is to make sure that, we're just, we're, again, belts and suspenders. We don't have to do this, but we're meeting again, we're just taking the opportunity to, you know, add a little flourish to the signature.
Due diligence.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor to ratify the Board of Education's act and action at its November thirteenth, twenty-twenty-three special meeting adopting the amended bylaws of the board, please say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Abstain? That motion has carried, and thank you guys for recognizing and understanding that I am so very human. All right, so we're now on to letters and communications and comments by board members on meeting items and any other items in their jurisdiction. So, we've already done the Cape in caps highlight, unless Matthew, you have more that you wanted to add. But Andrea, do you have any letters or communication?
Well, I wanted to say that I missed for the first time since I've been on the board, Cape Conference, and I really, really did miss it because it was a wonderful learning experience. And the second thing is, I did, um, run into a, a student that I had in eighth grade at least forty years ago, and she talked about all that she learned, so I wanted all of the teachers to know how, how you, we all as teachers affect the students in our classes, and that it doesn't go away. And if you haven't heard from them, believe me, they're talking about you and they're thinking about you. And the last thing that I have is, I didn't get to say anything before to, uh, to Kim and, and Liz and Rita and, and William, but I wanted to wish you from my Coast Guard heart, fair winds following sea.
Thank you, Rita. Thank you so much, man. Thank you. Bev, do you have anything?
No, no, thank you. I have nothing.
All right, Liz?
Now, I just had a, a, as Andrew was saying, you ran into a few students, I've run into a number coming back from, uh, like Nick Helbig is coming back from Wake Forest, coming up, and, um, he speaks so highly of, of Fitch, as well as, um, I had, um, oh goodness, Nicole Cabusco in my freshman class, my last freshman class at Fitch, and my, my last year's, as a senior, she was in my modern world history class at Avery Point. And she still looks at Fitch as one of those guiding lights, so I've had to tell you, you know, Groton Public School's doing something really good. So, I just wanted to say thanks.
Thank you, Liz. Thank you, Liz.
No, I'd like to just encourage the new board, new board members, to please contact me or any of us if they have any questions in, in the future.
Yep.
And hopefully, all will go well, and they'll do a great job leading this district.
Absolutely.
We, so we do not have a meeting on December 4th.
That is critical. So that is canceled. Yep. Dean?
Do you have anything?
Yes, I just wanted to thank the outgoing board members. You folks were here, except for Dr. Horgan. He should thank me, or not, actually. Voted for him to join us. Now, thank you very much, Rita. Rita, you and I have been interacting.
Yes, many years.
Even when I was not on the board for, for many years on this. And.
You were on the Town Council?
I, I was appointed actually by Mayor, Mayor Harry Watson to be the, in 2009, to be the liaison, Town Council liaison to the Board of Ed while the Board of Ed was negotiating teachers' contracts at the time. And I, I don't think that that was necessarily our first interaction, but in any, in any event, I've always considered you relatively friendly. Liz, friendly is all over you. That's, that's what you.
And I'm relative.
I'm waiting, I'm waiting.
Very, very, very sweet. Kim, yeah, you'll be, you'll, what am I going to say? You'll, you'll be missed. You know, I, thank you for your service.
Your leadership.
I will, I will say, it's not a pleasant thing to say, that when I think back on my schooling, I certainly can remember a lot of teachers, the, the good and the not-so-great. I might remember, if you press me, the name of our school superintendent. I do not remember any of the board members as a student. That's not something that the kids ever noticed.
Right.
I don't know how, I don't know how students here, you don't count, of course. I don't know how students here think of the board. Do they think of the board at all, or are we just like, do they even know there's a board?
Right.
So, and would it be a good thing for them to know that there's a board in education?
I, I think one thing that hopefully the new board will reinstate is the adopt a school. When each board member had a school that they went to the PTO meetings, made a special effort to make sure they went to every concert, I think you get to, you know, the students got to know us better.
Yeah.
And we used to have our Committee of the Whole meetings in one of the schools.
Right.
And I, I also think, I would highly recommend doing that again.
I could, I could, I remember that when I was going.
Yes. I also think of the civics course, and it would be really great, and I might have to pass on this idea to the teachers teaching it, that to have them come as one of their projects, to actually come to.
Ledger always has to sign off.
A town meeting, a board meeting, so they can see civics in action. Yes, yeah.
We used to have Boy Scouts. We would have Boy Scouts troops.
Boy Scouts and Ledger students in their, they had a class that they would come into our board meetings.
Jay, do you have any communications?
I did have two communications, one by email, one by postal mail, which is unusual. And I referred both of them to the superintendent for.
And we are handling that situation closely, monitoring.
Of course, I also, my, my interactions with, with Rita and Kim go way back to when my son was in the district, and they've been an inspiration over the years in calm leadership. And as other members have, have joined the board, I've learned something from each of you. And the important thing being that put the students first, and just keep that as your goal. And I will miss all of you.
Matthew?
I received two communications. Like Jay, I received a, a communication by U.S. Mail, which I referred on. About it, I'd only say, if you're going to write us a letter, we will guard your confidentiality, but an unsigned letter is difficult to receive.
Well, I couldn't hear that last part.
An unsigned letter is difficult to receive.
Yes. Yes.
I also received an email today from Irene Weiss. For those of you who don't know her, she's, I think her title is Chair of the Local League of Women Voters. And she sent me a notification about a program being offered by a Harvard professor, which I thought was interesting enough. I passed it on to Phil. It's a professional development program for high school civics and history teachers. It's Zoom-based, and it's no cost to the district at all. So I hope we'll look into it, and it may not be right for us, but at least we'll give it a thought. And finally, finally, no hugs today, only, well, virtual hugs. Virtual hugs to each of you.
Thank you.
I can't give you a virtual hug. You're staying. Virtual hugs to each of you. Some of you, I'm thinking of Kim, I've been very hands-on on the support and education you've given me, for which I am really, really grateful. Liz has been a wonderful partner on the Communication Committee. And while I didn't have as much physical interaction with, with you, Rita, I listen carefully to you. We don't always agree, but we debate, we don't argue, and I love that. And William, I'll just say, William, I have made a, a personal deep friendship with him. It is, it is.
Yeah, it's sad that he wasn't here.
It has been a privilege to know William, and we are going to stay in touch.
That's right. And so I received to an email and also a letter that I have sent to the district as well. And I've received some other communications, and once again, I have passed it on to Susan as, as well. And I just, I have always ended all my correspondence with Groton Proud. And so I am, I am going to continue to do that as we look at our future meeting dates. We do, there is not going to be a Committee of the Whole on the 4th, and the new sitting board will get the oath of office on December 5th. And the rest, I think that they are going to have a, it looks like you're going to have your, your regular meeting on the 18th. Is that, is that what I'm reading? Okay.
Regular meeting on the 18th.
The regular, special. It's regular and it's special.
Right. It's like, as Dean explained that. And for future suggested agenda items, I am going to make sure that Susan adds the, looking at energy, the long-term, long-term energy questions and usage. It looks like we, we should have a referral item for the, for the Committee of the Whole to talk about the CIC.
CIAC.
Thank you, that. And its new, and its new developments around that. And also, and just see if we can get Mark Romano to come in. And we might also want to do that, you guys are going to go into budget, but we might want to consider doing that and have him talk about, if there's anything new about the field committee, but also naming of the field. That's, that's something that we passed on to this new.
Yeah.
New coming board that we want to make sure that we get to. And also, Susan, the other item that I got was to have a Committee of the Whole where we have the Executive Director for Learn.
Yep.
To come in. Are there any other agenda items that I have missed?
Can I just add to, a request to Susan, if you could perhaps, when you chat with your colleagues in other districts, ask them about how they're dealing with the athletics and see if there's.
Maybe that's Mark can actually get that information with athletic directors.
Sure. With the transportation specifically, or with regard to the new CIAC ruling where we'll be going further places?
Traveling to Salem, Oregon for a match.
Well, I don't think it's going to be that bad, but I did talk to Bunicor on the field on Thanksgiving Day. And he said that really, we already have something established with five, and actually, one of the five aways is Grasso, which is nice, it's right next door. So that saves me in transportation. But they'll look at that, and they'll also continue to place some local.
So, because we don't have that in agenda item, I'm going to ask that, that's something that people will discuss further. Do you have a question?
I just had something to add on the communications aspect very quickly. I don't mean to take up anybody's time, but in terms of things that I've been able to do over the past week, ever since our CAPE convention, I've been in contact with, I believe, seven total student representatives from other districts all across our beautiful state of Connecticut and for the future with guidance from Ms. Susan Austin and Dr. Piazza. I would love to move forward with communications specifically aimed at building a better foundation of student involvement and the way that, as it was put at CAPE, the cream of the corn from each district, though I don't, I don't know if I'd see it that way, where these amazing like-minded individuals come together to really discuss how the next generation and how the next students, as we enter this new post-COVID era, can really start setting a sound foundation so that I know that when I leave here in June, that I know that we have something going forward that can really set a, what's the word I'm looking for, a precedent to future people who want to be a part of this as a student representative all across the state of Connecticut and the issues that they face, and the joys that they have, and the strengths that they have, and coming together under one, one body to discuss and communicate issues that could be greatly harmful or great in general, and being able to present more voices to the board. I think representation and the, the honor that I have to be at these meetings is something that, I mean, I, I take at a very high level of regard and respect. And I think that when you have all these amazing individuals that were really brought under one hotel roof that one day, it, it sparks something, and I'm going to chase this thing until it's chased.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, David. I'll make that recommendation. Maybe take them to a Zoom link to get you guys back together.
Absolutely. Yeah. Because there's too many, there's too many amazing brains that I met that day to not poke in the future when things came up.
Well, the state of California has passed a new law that's going to go into effect in 2024, that the student representative on the Board of Education has a vote.
Wow. That's kind of cool. So, that's kind of cool. Something to think about.
Legislation can matter.
Seems improved.
Would that be appropriate to forward to the Communication Committee, as it's really resonant with some other things we are going to look for?
Sure. You can take that on as an agenda item.
Okay.
Or the communications. Good. You got that? All right. So, once again, thank you. Thank you for my individual relationships with each member here, the sitting, both on, on Zoom and sitting here. Your guidance, your leadership, your kick in the butt every once in a while, or a lot, is useful and helpful, and it has been my honor and privilege. And I, I am, I will continue to be Groton Proud. Miss Andrea? Andrea? You're, I'm muted.
Sorry, my phone is ringing. And with that said, motion to adjourn.
Can I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All right. Motion is adjourned. Meeting is ended.
It's a wrap.
So cake and cookies, join us.
So there is cake here.
It's a wrap.